Everybody, we'll call this, uh, call the meeting to order. And I would like to welcome the Reverend Forbes Simon, the Associate Priest at St. James Episcopal Church.
Huh? Sermon?
Sermon.
Sermon, I'm sorry.
Thank you all for having me. Let us pray. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, we thank you for the abundance of your gifts you have bestowed upon the people of this community, for the bounty of this city, and the beautiful land in which it resides. We pray this day for your wisdom and strength upon our mayor and our city council to make fair, meaningful, and timely decisions for our city of Fairhope. Be with them and give them a spirit of wisdom to govern amidst the conflicting interests and issues of our time. Give them compassion to understand the needs of the people who live here and of one another. Give them a sense of your justice so that they may do what is good in the right of your eyes. May a sense of peace and trust rest upon this place and this group of officials we have entrusted to lead. We also pray for our first responders and all those who put their lives in danger so that we might live in safety and peace, for all those who are caring for the sick and the suffering in our community, and doctors, nurses, caregivers, and therapists, and for the many employees of this city who work tirelessly to keep our city running and thriving. All this we pray through your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. First thing on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the July 11th regular city council meeting and the minutes of the July 11th work session.
Kevin, we're gonna be busy tonight. I'm gonna go ahead and move to approve the minutes as submitted.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The minutes are approved. Mayor, your report, please.
Thank you. I just have a few things tonight. First, I want to let everybody know that hopefully Fairhope Avenue will open in the next couple of weeks. So, you know, we're getting towards the beginning of school, and that has been our goal all along, is to make sure that we can have traffic flow there. So, that is the, um, the force main that's going in there on Fairhope Avenue, near the Mitchell Cancer Center and near the Satellite Courthouse. We're hoping to have that road opened up in time for, um, school to open, or at least allow traffic to flow. Um, maybe some just have to go around some cones, but hopefully we can get traffic flowing there. The other thing is to, um, y'all did not seem to be very excited about this, but one thing that I think is a huge victory is that the Nichols Street substation is actually up and running. Um, that is a huge thing, 'cause it has been sitting there for almost a year, not operational. So, be able to have that, um, substation up and running and be able to transfer some load from other substations to that substation and, um, you know, to, for the intent that it was, you know, the purpose that it was intended to. So, excited about that. Thank you to Conrad and his staff and to, um, the contractors for keeping that project moving and for, um, helping us get that across the finish line. Um, the other thing is tomorrow is Councilman Conyers' birthday, so I know he's not here tonight, but wanna wish him a happy birthday. And also, um, just remind everybody that on Wednesday evening, um, at the Fairhope United Methodist Church, that the, um, police department will be holding their, um, Back to School, Back the Blue event. Um, they'll be giving out, you know, um, hot dogs, hamburger, or hot dogs, not hamburgers, um, hot dogs, chips, and backpacked school supplies to, um, uniforms, to folks who need those. So, if you need to, please attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, item number three on the agenda is public participation for agenda items, and there are no public hearings tonight, so this would be for item five through 23. So, if you have something on any of those items you'd like to speak to now, is your opportunity.
Good afternoon. What if I have something that's not-
Could you please state your name?
Oh, Charlotte Visegard on Ingleside, off Ingleside.
Okay.
What if, Michigan, actually. What if I have an item on here that's not, uh, what if I have an item, I just wanna mention, that's not on here? There's room for that afterwards.
That is for at the end of the meeting, correct?
At the end of the meeting, okay, thank you.
Yes. Thank you. Uh, any others for public participation for agenda items? See-
Oh, it is on, I'm sorry, it is on here.
Okay.
The property on Ingleside, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no.
And it reads all the things.
The property on Ingleside, Miss Nancy Lewis's home?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I did not see that, no, I just-
That is number nine, I believe.
Number nine, okay. So, I live, you know, not too far from here. I love this home. I've done a lot of research on it. We all know it's Miss Nancy Lewis's house. It's over 100 years old, it's in a historical site. For those who don't know who Nancy Lewis is, please Google her name, Nancy Lewis, Fairhope, great information. I talked to her grand, great, great granddaughter, Thelma, and she said she had been speaking with Councilman Carl, 'cause I was gonna reach out to the Birmingham Black Historical Preservation Society to see if it can get listed as historical home, but it can't. She said they talked to the developer, he would, was even willing, Mr. Carlton, Will Carlton, WCTT Properties. He would have contributed, you know, to part of moving it, but it would have to be moved in pieces. It would cost between $40,000 and $100,000, and then the question is, where would you move it to? The city would have to contribute land and, but anyway, at the very least, and I know his, um, a historical marker's gonna go there on the property, he's agreed to that, Mr. Um, Will Carlton, the developer, but at the very least, there are these, um, since the house can't be moved, and I wish it could, but there are some, some beautiful green columns in the front, which would be lovely to incorporate into a garden and/or fountain on that property, wherever the historical marker's gonna go. So, I hope he can, you can't, I love vintage, I love history, you can't find those columns anywhere. If anybody's a contractor in here, you know that. They don't make them, you can't find them. If you know the house, those columns in the front are really pretty. So, I even stopped at the developer's home and left a note, he wasn't there, I mean, at his office on Fairhope Avenue, to see if he can please salvage those green columns, and, I know it says, "up to him," but if he could salvage those green columns and incorporate them into a garden and/or fountain where the historical marker's gonna be, I think that would be so pretty. You know the columns I'm talking about in the front of the house, so, anyway. And then, I'm not sure if our water's on here, is our water on the agenda, or should I bring that up afterwards?
What about the water?
The water, there's fluoride in the water, and I read, you know, in the thing that goes out in our bill, when y'all list all-
That's not, that's not on the agenda.
That's not on the agenda, so I'll wait till after the meeting, okay.
Please, yes ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Seeing no one else, I will close public participation and go to council comments. Councilmember Earl?
I don't have any comments tonight, other than what I've already made in the work session.
Councilman Boone?
None tonight.
None from me, so we will be quickly moving along. Uh, item number five is a final adoption for an ordinance to amend zoning ordinance number 1253. Uh, it's a request to zone Corte Rockwell Place LLC to B2 General Business District concurrent with conditional annexation into the city of Fairhope.
Thank you, Kevin. So, we, we did hear the public hearing, so usually I will fly through this. We didn't have any public comment at the last one, but for the sake of this case, the property is currently unzoned in Baldwin County, and the aerial of the existing land is shown on the screen to the right. This is, aligns with our comprehensive plan, where we actually show a, a high-density village node in this location. As most of you know, there's been, uh, quite a few projects approved in, at this, near this intersection. Uh, they, we kinda quickly threw the map together. There's Harvest Green East and West, residential subdivision, Rockwell Apartments, and 10 acres of commercial. Across 181 is Public Shopping Center, and across 104 is the U, New USA Surgery Center. Uh, this aligns with both our comprehensive plan. It is coming in with a request of B2 with conditional annexation, so the uses allowed on B, within B2 are shown on the screen. As I know the council knows, but I, I wanna rehash this for the public, when we have a rezoning request like this, there is no site plan attached to it. There is no plans, uh, under review or being approved of how this site will be used, other than they are working with Aldat to tie to the property to the north, to have another road built, because they know they're gonna be limited on the, the accesses, ingress and egress on those state roads. Uh, this did go through Planning Commission, who recommended unanimously of, with a vote of seven to zero for approval. Have any questions, I'll be happy to address them.
Council, any questions for Hunter on item, agenda item number five? No questions? Clerk, will you?
You can motion in a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Make a motion for final adoption.
Second.
Now, I think we're ready.
Place one.
Aye.
Council President?
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
All right. Ordinance passes, thank you. Uh, item number six is final adoption, uh, ordinance amend, zoning ordinance number 1253, proposed amendment to change and alter the city of Fairhope zoning ordinance to revise Article III, Section B, uh, Table 3.1, be amended as zoning District M1 to allow a kennel or animal hospital use permitted only on appeal and subject to special conditions, and this was introduced at our last council meeting.
That's correct. So, I'll, I'll go on through here. There's three areas where you can ask for this use. They are conditional on Board of Adjustment Approval in all three, currently B2, B3, A, and M2. We have no properties zoned M2. The M1 properties, where someone could ask for use of this, are shown in purple on the screen. The, um, we, not every property is, is appropriate for that kennel use, but this is the zoning district where it is most appropriately, uh, allowed, so with Board of Adjustment Approval, we recommend this, uh, to be allowed on any M1 properties. Planning Commission did recommend approval, again with a unanimous vote of seven to zero.
Okay. Council, any questions for Hunter on this?
I don't have a question, but I do wanna add that the, also the Industrial Development Board, which, which, you know, does look after, uh, M1, also made a unanimous recommendation of approval.
Okay. All right. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. Clerk?
Place one.
Aye.
Council President?
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
All right, ordinance passes. Uh, next up, item number seven is final adoption of an ordinance to repeal, ordinance number 1012, and repeal and replace ordinance number 1254, known as the City of Fairhope Right-of-Way Construction and Administration Ordinance. Uh, this was introduced at our last meeting. Um, Eric went over this again, and, you know, went over it again, went over it last meeting, and then, uh, discussed it in the work session. Council, do y'all have any additional questions or comments for Eric at this time?
I just wanna thank him. Uh, you know, this is one of those times where you wish you could quote that statement that Rodney Dangerfield made in Back to School. I have a question about Part B, subset two, Section B. Remember that question, Phil, do you remember that? But I can't remember it, so I'll do that.
Well, then, without someone with the Rodney Dangerfield quote, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those, oh, clerk, I'm sorry, will you call the question?
Place one.
Aye.
Council President?
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
That is a good move, though, thank you. Ordinance does pass. Moving on, item number eight is final adoption of an ordinance to amend ordinance number 1510, known as the Personnel Rules, Policies, and Procedures Ordinance, adding Section 3.06 Hurricane Operations Plan for City Employees. Uh, this was introduced at the July 11th meeting, um, and Mayor, if you'll just briefly-
This was always kind of an unwritten rule, um, for employees, knowing that if we had a hurricane or a natural disaster coming, that they were expected to report to work and given, set, laying out the expectations of the city. Um, this was never fit in writing, and with as many new employees as we have, and in light of some things that happened during Hurricane Sally, we thought it was, you know, prudent that we go ahead and add this to the personnel playbook.
Got it. Council, any questions for the mayor on that, on item number eight?
I'll make a motion for final adoption.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second for final adoptions. Clerk?
Place one.
Aye.
Council President?
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
All right. Ordinance passes, thank you. Uh, item number nine is site plan review and approval, request of WCTT Properties LLC for site plan approval of 309 South Ingleside. The subject property is zoned B3B and lies within the medical overlay district, and is approximately 70,667 square feet.
Thank you, Council. This is a site plan review, um, and that did go through Planning Commission, had a concurrent multiplexy project where utilities, more technical reviews were, were reviewed, so I will not be discussing too many of those things. Site plan reviews were, a lot of times, more about how it's used and what it looks like. Uh, this is in the medical, medical overlay district. The setbacks are a little different because of the way the lot was platted. They had platted setbacks, so those did apply here. Um, the, the proposed buildings do meet height limits. Uh, it is composed of seven, eight, sorry, eight townhomes, um, residential townhomes, and two commercial buildings. Um, the, as you see, the elevations on the screen here, layout of the, uh, townhomes, I'm getting to a site plan, so the, one of the commercial buildings on the left is actually going to be one unit that's set aside for restaurant use, upstairs, shared offices, and then another, uh, building with four live-work units, so, uh, living quarters above, commercial below. The site plan is shown on the screen how that lays out. Uh, particular attention, I'd want to take a look at the on-street parking that is created here. Um, most of you go in the Warehouse Bakery, some of those buildings there, it's, uh, one of the things we wanted to focus on is, is we see new developments in this area, they're not sidewalk, people are not walking behind cars as they're pulling out, which is existing condition around there. The app that has accommodated those, uh, to the point where probably gonna, as a closeout procedure on some of the MOP, we're gonna wind up accepting five feet of the lot for those public parking spaces. Um, I'll show you the landscape plan in a second, but those have been approved by the city. Horticulturalist, uh, the park, they're meeting the zoning ordinance for parking requirements. Uh, sidewalk is being installed and connected to the property line on both the, the easternmost property line and northernmost property line, as well as at the intersection where the crosswalk is. A fence is, being provided with a row of, of shrubs on the, as the buffer screening adjacent to the northern residential lots. Uh, garbage is collected on-site and screened. Stormwater is, was reviewed, but just to mention, that is tying into existing stormwater drainage. Uh, no signs for review, but those will meet our current ordinances. Of course, the erosion plan will be, was reviewed, but will be in place while construction is, is, um, being done. The, let's see, the, I just, I already mentioned that general comment, clarifying the westernmost property line. So, probably the thing to look at here, I've got some landscape plans, there's some, they're tight, a little bit easier to see what's going on. The Pla, Planning Commission did review this case, had two, uh, conditions of approval. Those have been revised. The Planning Commission did vote with a, a vote of seven to zero to recommend approval of this project. Those two, the revised parking spaces in the site plan to be purbius, and to revise the landscape plans to accommodate that right-of-way dedication. Um, the, those two changes are kinda highlighted on the screen. Um, if you're looking at site, Nichols is to the bottom of the page, Ingleside is, is on your left-hand side of the screen. And then we kinda zoom in, we're seeing the northernmost portion of the property here, where you see the private parking area, screening, uh, buffers, and then there's a large, uh, green space area between the residential units and the commercial, which is here. So, moving back and forth between those, you see the, the green space on the bottom of the page, and that is connected, and you see the match line there on the top of the page here. Landscape provided in the, it's also, has a 25, uh, I'm sorry, a 20-foot landscape buffer per the tree ordinance. So, all of those conditions have been met, and we're happy to recommend approval with no conditions.
Okay.
So, as what was fine, what was approved, were the conditions were, were met, and your recommendations were met? No, no pushback from the developer?
No, they, they revised the plans, uh, and Chris Leavie is here with the engineer. Um, I know Winston Smith's back there as applicant, and I'm, don't know if we have anybody else, if there's questions, but, but I know they are here if there's any questions as well.
Okay. Council, any questions for Hunter?
You know, I, I have a couple for you, um, and then I may have some for the developer. You know, I, I think that we all, we, we all hate to see the loss of, of a historical home, but I, but I'll, I'll admit, I, I think that the plans for this, uh, I think they've done a good job. I, I think it's fitting in that area of town. I think it'll, it'll, it'll bring something to that area of town that I think is, is growing, is vibrant, is, is gonna strengthen that, uh, be another nice node in our, in our city. Is, is there a, um, expiration date on when they have to start on this? You know, so, so many times we, we approve things, and things sit idle for five years, and then they come back and wanna change it, and, and we sometimes have heartache with that. So, I know they can always come back for another site plan review, I, I know that, but if there was a, uh, an expiration time on, you know, starting some of this, and typically what we see is things that were penciled in as commercial property, they wanna come back and make it residential, 'cause residential's really easy to sell. Like Terrell and Fairhope, everybody wants to live here. So, but I think it needs, I think the commercial, uh, aspect of this, because that is also right next to M1, uh, that's Medical Overlay District, there's light industrial in that area, so I think it has a, a lot of uses, and that's why, I like the project because it, right now, is truly mixed use, so how hard would it be for them to say, "We can't rent that space, we're gonna make it more apartments?"
Well, and, and that was kind of some internal, so we have kind of three descriptions on mixed use in our zoning laws. Part of our goal in the comprehensive plans, bringing all that. Um, I know we've had discussions in the CBD on mixed use, and to the point where we made a, a requirement recently, that the ground floor's 50%. So, that was kind of the logic to apply, applied here through, um, it's, it's an untr, it's a non-traditional mixed use, um, in medical overlay that says the ground floor's commercial, and, and up two floor, up to two floors above that's residential. That's one of the things that really attracted me about this project, it, it didn't cover the whole property, or as much as they could, with, with, uh, buildings. But how do you get that commercial component? That's why it was important for that front, those front two to remain commercial. Live-work is not a defined use within our zoning ordinance, but we made some conditions on the, the MOP.
The commercial space is defined, and this site plan, as was presented, is shown as commercial.
Yes, and there is restrictions on those units not to be rented out, the short-term rentals and things like that, as individual, they are intended to be working down below, and that person, you know, uh, work lives upstairs. So, of course, that's, we have an expiration, um, of both the site plan and the MOP, but there's nothing stopping someone in the future from coming back and, and at least asking for it. It's gonna be dependent on those deciding, uh, in those seats at the time to uphold those, those goals. But if it relieves you at all, that's my thought from the beginning, I think that's, that's the planning departments, and I do, do think that's also what the intent of the Planning Commission was.
Yeah, I wanna make sure that it meets the intent, and I know times change, we'll get that too. Sometimes things change, and you know what? Things could go bad, and we might be begging for that. I mean, we don't wanna take that for granted, but at the same time, I, I've seen it all too often up here, you know, things change, and they expect us to change, and that's not what, we, that's not the bill of goods when we're sold at the top. I never saying that would happen, hope it never happens, but that's, I'm doing, I just wanna be on record of saying that. And then my next question, as far as the, the developer maybe, and you don't have to answer this question if you don't want, but, um, uh, to the young lady's, uh, concerns about, uh, historical significance, uh, you know, do, you know, we, are you willing to put a plaque out there to show the historical significance of that property? Uh, I can't tell you, you have to use architectural features from the current home, but is there, has there been any talk of that?
Yes, sir.
It may not sway my vote, but, you know, I, I think that it would be a good gesture, uh, it, it'd just show good citizenship that there was, if it was possible to incorporate those features.
Yeah, and let me give an update that I am a little remiss to, to not mention, this is part of the MOP review. Um, and, and the name was wrong, but, uh, Councilman Martin has went to a lot of, uh, personal, uh, spent a lot of personal time trying to check into this, see what options are available, so, uh, there will be in the federal landmarks, a digital representation of this property, and, and the, the applicant has also agreed that something would be on-site and memorial, um, for Miss-
I think it makes the property more valuable to memorialize that, too. I think it helps the person.
And there is, I also wanna mention, we do have a landmark on the coastal where the, her original property was, there's also a memorial there as well. So, now, if there's specific questions, we didn't get into that, it's actually a, a condition of approval of the MOP, that there would be, uh, something to remember to Miss Lewis on that.
That is a condition, okay, and that's agreed to, then you said?
Yes, no, nothing specific. Uh, we didn't get into what those look like.
Exactly what it's gotta look like, but just that there would be-
Yeah.
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 Okay. Councilman Brerly, got anything, any other for, for Hunter or for the developer? Mr. Biden?
Nope.
All right, no other questions?
Thank you.
All right, with no other questions, entertain a, a motion?
I move to approve the site plan.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Uh, item number 10 is a resolution that the city of Fairhope supports the Alabama Department of Transportation's application for a bridge investment program grant and other sources of federal funding that may become available. Councilmember Brerly, I'll let you just briefly-
Yeah, you know, we've all heard about the, uh, Mobile River Bridge and new Bayway Project, um, 2.7 billion. We got 250 million coming from the state of Alabama, 125 from the federal government, another $500 million, um, uh, loan, a grant that's been, uh, applied for, and this is yet just another, uh, grant opportunity that we are, we're seeking the city council support on to, we being the, uh, Eastern Shore and Mobile MPO, seeking support to, uh, hopefully obtain some more federal funding.
Okay. Councilman Boone, any questions on that?
I do not.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number 11 is a resolution that the city of Fairhope does hereby consent and agree to the transfer and assignment of the lease held by Ritchie Company LLC, or its affiliate Shucks LLC, to TBT Fairhope LLC. And this is just the assignment of the Marina, uh, lease agreement from the Gambino entity to a new, uh, hopefully a new restaurant. Um, if council, I know, I know Councilmember Brerly was involved in this, I know the mayor was. Um, if there are not any questions on this, I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, I could just speak to it for just a quick moment, you know, that, you know, the law says that if there's no compelling reason to deny, uh, the transfer, then you can't deny it, and I don't see any compelling reasons, uh, you know, the, the company that this, uh, lease is gonna be transferred to is reputable. Uh, I think that I could say it will be a restaurant, and, um, you know, the, the Marina will remain intact with the lease, there have been, I've been asked that question, uh, you know, the mayor's been, uh, heavily involved, uh, Council President Conyers has been heavily involved in, in, in these discussions, and, uh, you know, it's, it's pretty exciting what, what could become out there, but I won't, I won't say, I won't speak for, uh, the new, uh, owners of the lease, but, um, they, um, you know, in the very near future, there could be some more negotiations in which the lease changes, uh, as fact, uh, the terms of the lease, uh, and, and, you know, I won't go into those details because I don't wanna get the cart before the horse, but, um, there's, there's some exciting times out there, and you're gonna see some activity out there on the pier soon, and, um, I think that, that Fairhope's Main Street will have a lot of action out there.
Sounds good. Um, any other questions or comments on item number 11? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
All right, I got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number twelve is a resolution that the city council hereby approves an extension of Surermaine Point Repair and Bypass Connections to WR Mitchell Contractor for the following projects, St. Michael's Way, Bancroft, and Manic Court until September thirtieth, two-thousand-and-twenty-two. The extension is due to COVID-19, rain delays, and labor shortage. Current rate of the contract will remain the same, and the contractor bond will not be called.
Move to approve the extension.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number thirteen is a resolution that the city council awards Water Treatment Plant Number Three Expansion for the Water and Wastewater Department to the Creel Company for a total cost not to exceed seven million, five-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars. Funding of the award for the FY twenty-two budget is three million, and the proposed FY twenty-three budget is four million, five-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars. Jason went over this in, in the work session, and for those of you who were not watching, this will increase our water capacity by at least two-point-eight million gallons. Okay?
Thirty-three percent.
Thirty-three percent increase. Counsel, any questions or comments on item number thirteen?
You know, I feel like I need to say something over a seven-and-a-half million-dollar cost, but you, you did cover it, and we covered this. I just encourage you to go back to the, to the work session if you're concerned. We did talk about this quite a bit. We've, we've talked about this for actually weeks and even months, this has been in the works. So, I think that while that's, it looks like a big price tag, when you, when you really think that you're increasing the, the, the production of our, of our freshwater by a full thirty-three percent, it's not so unreasonable.
I agree with that, especially in light of some of the issues we've had recently. It's, it's imperative that we get stuff like this done sooner rather than later. Counsel, any other comments or questions on item number thirteen?
I move to award the bid.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number thirteen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Resolution passes. Item number fourteen is a resolution that the city council awards Arts Alley Downtown Transit Hub for the Public Works Department to RHD's Building Company LLC with a total bid proposal of one million, six-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand, seven-hundred-and-eleven dollars and a general fund balance transfer to cover additional costs subject to final funding approval.
By the, by the MPO, right?
By the MPO, yes.
He can make that change, just read that one, yes, okay, cool.
Okay, so, guys, this is a, a, a project that we have discussed for years, and we are hoping to eventually get it across the finish line, and this is one step closer to doing that. Any questions or comments on item number fourteen?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, item number fourteen passes. Item number fifteen is a resolution that the City of Faribault has voted to procure an off-site data backup system from C-Spire Data Center to replace the server their city currently uses for the IT department. System is on contract through the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance, contract number oh-one-nine-seven, therefore, and does not have to be let out for bid, the annual cost for the product and service not to exceed thirty-nine-thousand, six-hundred-and-eighty dollars. Again, we discussed this in work session, and that thirty-nine-thousand, six-hundred-and-eighty dollars is within budget.
Under budget, fifteen thousand.
I move to procure the off-site data backup system.
All right, I got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, number fifteen passes. Item number sixteen is a resolution that the City of Faribault has voted to procure a Bushog TDC twelve-hundred finishing mower or equivalent for the Quail Creek Golf Course, and the equipment is available for direct procurement through the Sourcewell Contract, which has been nationally bid and therefore does not have to be let out for bid. The total cost will be twenty-five-thousand, three-hundred dollars. And we heard about this a couple of weeks ago, and then Bobby mentioned it again, and this, even though originally not in the budget, has been substituted for some items that are in the budget, so that it is covered under their budgeted amount for this year.
And may I add also, Councilman Boone and I went out to the course last week, again, had invitation of the staff to check it out, and everything's coming along really good. Fairways look great, as Tom had mentioned, the greens are, they've made a, you know, a, a five-hundred-percent improvement, so yeah, they're, they're turning the corner out there.
Did you get Councilman Boone to actually play golf, or just to?
No.
No, but he got Councilman Boone to eat that fine lunch they've got, and I can tell you, I'm gonna make a plug for that restaurant they have out there to the general public. If y'all wanna find hamburgers, step on out there and get yourself one, 'cause it is good, it's cheap, and it's.
If it's cheap, yeah, you didn't pay.
And bring a bib when you come, 'cause it's gonna get more on you than you get in you.
Conveniently forgot your wallet again when you went.
And that was very appropriate. Councilman Burrell paid for that meal, since he dragged me out there.
For about the third time. I moved to buy the mower.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item number seventeen is a resolution that the City of Faribault has voted to procure the Virtra Virtual Interactive Coursework and Training Academy for the Police Department from Virtra as sole source distributor and authorized procurement based on the option allowed by the Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five, section forty-one dash sixteen, fifty-one, thirteen. The cost will be sixty-eight-thousand, six-hundred-and-twelve dollars and seventy-four cents. This is something we talked, talked a little bit about several weeks ago when we were looking at surplus in our budget, and I know several of us spoke to the chief about it. Lieutenant Nolte was here to discuss it in the workshop, work session. Counsel, if anybody's got any other questions or comments regarding item number seventeen they can ask now?
Well, I can tell you, I went through that program, and I cannot stress how important this is to the police department. It is, it is eye-opening, it really is.
Yeah.
You know, you think you know what you do to do.
Stressful, yeah.
Yeah, no.
I think I was like wrong on all three.
And I think it's really, really good.
I did shoot the person in the head, though.
I think a child ended up killing.
It's a virtual simulator now, okay?
Do what?
I didn't know a child end up killing Councilman.
Oh, yeah, I got shot by a girl.
Yep, by like a ten-year-old girl.
What's wrong with getting shot by a girl? I mean.
Well, she's rather young, and you do a little, you're a little hesitant, but yeah. You gotta do what you gotta do, and unfortunately, I failed.
Yeah.
So, it's, it is eye-opening, I'm gonna tell you.
It's tough.
It is tough.
I know, I don't even really know, I don't even know where to go from.
Did you go to that?
I did not, but apparently I missed, I missed something.
I didn't sleep for three days after I went through that.
I'll be honest with you, you know, this, this type of situation they put you through, 'cause these are just selected random, uh, different scenarios for the police officers, and when you read about all this junk going on, it's like, you know, what do you do? It's very, very helpful in letting you know, and protecting the citizens and protecting the officers and everybody, and I can't stress enough on how important this is.
I think one thing that I really liked about that training, just to add to it, is that you can actually take either like the city, city hall or a church and scan their interior and be able to have that scenario as part of that training. So, in today's world, when we're looking at, you know, people who come in churches and, you know, and with, with guns or like in council chambers or anything like that, you can actually do real-world training. I mean, it's virtual training, but you can, you can do that based on, you know, the layout of this building, for instance, or a church or anything, so it'll be real helpful to our community.
Absolutely, it sounds like it, okay.
I move to procure the Virtra, Virtra Virtual Interact, Interactive Course. You said that so well. Anyway, that's the motion.
Thank you.
Yeah, a second, whatever he said.
All right, well, I've got a motion and a second, item number seventeen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item number eighteen is a resolution that the City of Faribault approves the procurement of an Altech Truck Model LR eight-sixty-E seventy with an over-center articulating aerial device for the electric department, and the truck is available for direct procurement through the Sourcewell Contract, which has been nationally bid and therefore does not have to be let out for bid. The total cost will be two-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars.
Move to purchase the truck.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. And Conrad was telling us in the work session, this is one that's been asked for, for a while. This one became available immediately, and so we wanna jump on that now and get that taken care of. Is that right?
No, sir, this is opposite. We've got one that's being built as we speak, it's been on there for years now.
Right, but that's, that's down the line, this one is available today, and we're moving that budget money from that purchase up to this one, and then asking for budget money for that one later. Got it? I was close to right. All right, I will, do I have, I have a motion in a second? I don't?
You got a motion, so approved?
I think I made the motion, I thought.
I thought I had.
What are you doing, Lisa, asleep?
Do I have a motion in a second now? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item number nineteen is a resolution that the City of Faribault approves the procurement of roof repairs for two buildings at the Quail Creek Golf Course Maintenance Area for the Public Works Project to roof doctors with an amount total not to exceed twelve-thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
I hear this is insurance claims?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I move to approve the procurement of the roof repairs.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number twenty is a resolution that the City of Faribault approves the procurement of, for labor for the upgrade to visitor's side of the municipal football stadium by MH McLaughlin LLC in the amount of twenty-one-thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty dollars plus thirteen-thousand, five-hundred in materials, materials for a total of thirty-four-thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty dollars.
Move to procure the labor and the materials for the upgrades.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item number twenty-one is a resolution that the City of Faribault amends the budget for FY twenty-one, twenty-two as recommended and presented, and authorizes the city treasurer to make the necessary changes.
I move to amend the budget as recommended, specifically debit of thirty-five thousand, taken from the budget for maintenance of vehicles and equipment, and moving it to a credit for purchases of vehicles and equipment.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next, item number twenty-two is an appointment of Nicole Love and a reappointment of Jim Horner and Ben Freiter to the Faribault Environmental Advisory Board.
Make a motion, we approve the appointment?
My second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries, appointments are made. Item number twenty-three is a reappointment of Katie Bolton, Chris Riley, and Gary Gover to the Faribault Pedestrian and Bicycle Committee.
I move for the appoint, uh, they're all reappointments, I move for the reappointments for a three-year term.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions?
Just thank everybody for their service.
Absolutely. Hearing, no other questions or comments, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, reappointments are made, item twenty-three passes. Item number twenty-four is public participation for non-agenda items.
Was this part?
That was, it was a correct, it was a correction in our ID, but it was on there.
I just wanna say, I'm very excited about the development that's gonna go on the Nichols and Ingleside, it's gonna make everybody's property values increase, but I really think it's gonna make everybody happy if that historical marker's put there, you know, the people that live, you know, there in the family, and, and the columns, I went and talked to the guy outside, and they're in trying, even trying to incorporate some of the windows and do something, and there was a door inside with etching and flowers etched on it that's old, and, and I said, you know, if the great-granddaughter could have that, if the family doesn't want it, you know, I like vintage, and then a man said, "What about the museum?" I'm like, "Yes, the museum, just don't let, you know, it go, demolish it, it needs to be salvaged." So, anyway, I'm very excited about it. So, the fluoride in the water, when we got our last, you know, statement with this little thing in it, fluoride's poison, I didn't know fluoride was in our water, that's why you don't swallow your toothpaste, you know, and then, and I filter my water, a lot of people filter their water with different water pitchers and stuff, but it says on here that there's fluoride that's added to help reduce tooth decay. We don't need fluoride in our water to help reduce tooth decay, I hope people are brushing their teeth, but fluoride in our water is really not good, unless it's purifying something, something else, but you really shouldn't drink, you know, I'm just wondering why there's fluoride in our water. If it is to prevent tooth decay, people shouldn't be drinking their water anyway, and if you're doing it just to prevent tooth decay, you should be brushing your teeth anyway, so